Good morning and welcome to the selectmen's meeting on Wednesday, September 27th, 2017. If you would like to join me, if you would like.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to entertain a motion to approve some different warrants. Approve an expense warrant from 9/2017 for $213,839.60. Approve a wire warrant, which is for August meals tax, for 9/2017 for $2.58. Approve a cable warrant for 9/2617 for $159,900. And approve an expense warrant for 9/2617 for $2,494.74.
You have the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now I have, I'd like to acknowledge reports from the advisory board. And then I have some announcements. A reminder, the 39th Annual Apple Country Fair will begin from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Saturday, October 7th, on the historic Brookfield Town Common. It includes over 70 craft vendors, live music, a quilt raffle, children's activities, apple pie contests, food vendors, bake sale, table, raffle, and much more. For more information, visit applecountryfair.com. Now we have some trip or treat Halloween events will be held Halloween night, October 31st. Trip or treat is in the Village and Common area, 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Meet at the fire station for the parade to the common. Parade will leave promptly at 7:30 p.m. Crossing contest in the gazebo upon arrival at the common. In an effort to help those who live in the district area, donations are being accepted at the library and elementary school through October 28th. Please remember that these donations are meant to help ease the burdens on those in the Village and Common areas and are known to tend to be your sole rest of trip or treat candy. There will be no bonfire this year. And we have, next on our agenda is public access. Anyone have anything on public access this morning? We'll move on to our first. We'll run to our first agenda item, and that is with our chief Blincher. And this is about some, it's about some detail monies.
Correct. I was asked to come to kind of clarify a situation, and I, I mean, I don't know that I can clarify it other than, you know, what I've already said. Back in either 2014 or 2015, due to the house move, there were some three details that have not been paid. And I guess there's some issue on whether it's Mr. Holcroft who owes a detail or Verizon who owes a detail. Originally, we, Holly was told that Verizon was going to pick up the detail. Mr. Holcroft was also told the same thing. We submitted the details to Verizon, and they said they weren't going to pay them. Then we told Mr. Holcroft that he owed the details. He was never sent the bill. Verizon was sent the bill, but they didn't pay it, even though Holly spoke to somebody on the phone at Verizon that said they were going to pay it. So when Mr. Holcroft said he was, when he was told he was responsible for the bill, he said, "Give me some time and let me work on it with Verizon." So that's kind of where we stand right now.
We have been talking, you know, some different measures that we can go after Mr. Holcroft to get somebody this money.
Or Verizon.
Uh, Verizon.
Right. I mean, the options were making Verizon be held accountable, making Mr. Holcroft be held accountable, or going and asking for the transfer of the money on the floor, which I have not decided yet, and...
It shouldn't be, I don't feel that it should be that. Should come, if he has, if, you know, if he has paid this, I mean, if he should be the one that's paying this detail.
Yeah, let me, what I'll do is I'll get the reasons from Verizon why they're not paying, because the confusion came in when they told both us and Mr. Holcroft that they would pay the bill. And then a supervisor stepped in and said they were not going to pay the bill. So, Mr. Holcroft, to my knowledge, has not been officially told that he owes the money, because every time I've talked to him, he said, "Let me work on it with Verizon." He was going to still work on it with Verizon.
Because I know you had already paid the details through the detail account.
Correct, through the revolving account was paid, correct.
The way I feel, and I don't know how the other members feel, I feel that that money should go back into your debt, go into the general fund, and if you need, load that detail money that's there, it should be paid.
I agree on that.
Two things. First, the, he was responsible for the detail, whether the agreement was Verizon or not, the ultimate person that's responsible was Mr. Holcroft. Further, since that day, there was also a determination that the trees would be replaced and had to be cut down. Those trees have not been cut down.
Or replaced, yeah.
Or replaced. So that on Brenda's list of the things that are in question is that a paid detail was not reimbursed, and that trees were not planted, so therefore, at least until such time as those things have happened, no permits will be issued.
Let me issue him a formal bill requesting it, because like I said, it's been in conversation.
Okay, because at one point, I saw, physically saw it, though you're saying it was never sent to him.
I don't, I don't know that. Holly could have sent, I know, I know she sent one to...
So there was at some point, because at one point, I physically had a copy of it, that there was two copies of that bill. One dated, I don't remember, and I went looking for them. I found other things, looking for the copies that I previously had of that. Okay? One of them was issued to Verizon. One of them, I think it was two to three months later, had a date that it was printed, that it was issued to Mr. Holcroft. Okay? Now, I don't know whether you...
I'm just going on my, I'm sure Holly did.
Okay.
I'm just going on my phone calls, my person-to-person conversation. So for my clarity, I would like to say, okay, you owe me this money.
Okay, so I'm just letting you know, the bill physically existed at some point in time when it was taken on.
Oh, it still does. There's two copies. There's a copy that he had, or I believe Holly sent to him, and one that she also sent to Verizon.
And part of the conditions of the move of that house was that the expenses would not be put on the town.
Absolutely.
Okay. So I frankly don't, I don't have as much emotional investment in who pays it, so long as it gets paid. I suspect Verizon wouldn't be refusing to pay it unless they feel that they have legal standing, so to your point. And if you need somebody else on the phone with Verizon, if for some reason they don't respond to you...
No, I have a contact, I believe her name was Elaine.
So I'd like to understand what their legal standing is for saying they're not responsible, because if they're not responsible, he is.
Right. It was because it was a house move, and it was not, according to them, it's not work that they normally do. It's not like a transformable or something like that. They have to take down the lines because he was moving the house.
Yeah, and it had nothing to do with any activity that's part of their standard.
Correct.
It should be his expense to do it. And then where you said where Brenda's involved, I don't know, Brenda, if I'm, I don't know if you could actually collect this money, because you're a tax collector, and something like this is, would be have to go to a town collector.
Correct. So what I'm asking the individual departments is just to give me an outstanding list. It does not need to be an amount attached, or even what it was levied for. It's just that it's an outstanding debt owed to the town, and we'll go accordingly.
In your, in your role as a tax collector, you have a role of responsibility to the building inspector of those issuing permits. You allow them to understand whether they can issue permits or not. And that goes for planning, that goes for zoning.
It doesn't affect things like, you know, other licenses, like dog licenses or anything like that. It's just basically, I don't think it does. It doesn't, oh, it does! I, oh, I...
The way it's written in the bylaws, it's, you can't issue anything.
Anything.
You know.
And I think this is just a good wake-up call to all of us, as to the practices of the town.
Yeah, a tendency away from accountability for a long time, so...
So I don't know, I do agree, I don't know, do we want to make a motion that Brenda get, that Brenda will get a list from all of the different departments on the outstanding monies?
I have sent out an email.
She's on the case.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that Karen sent out a supporting email from us that states, look, this is going to be the policy of the town, please provide this level of information to the tax collector. Because departments, with the exception of the water department, basically...
They just need their name and an address, and then they'll get sent back to another department. I'm not going to collect the money for them, I'm just going to send it back to them.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, I'll second that motion.
I think it's, it's time.
Yeah, it is. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, chief. Come on, this morning. The next one is, we're going to talk about the Community Compact Grant for Regional Financial Director. We're going to have a discussion on that. And we had all, I'm sure you all had gotten the letter from Bay State Municipal Accounting Fund from Justin. And so I'll let Carrie, our town accountant, Carrie take over, she'd like to discuss it.
Basically, what's going on right now is there are several communities in the state of Massachusetts who have brand new or no employees at the moment. It's very hard to fill the shoes of town employees with people with municipal experience. Unfortunately, the towns are looking outside and bringing in people with no municipal experience. And there are a lot of towns who are, again, going through what we're going through, not aware of the once-a-year items, or the twice-a-year items, or things like that that each department is responsible for. So what Bay State Municipal Accounting is proposing is that they would help us to write, help the five communities that are involved write a grant to the state through the Community Compact Efficiency and Regionalization Program, in which this would provide funds to Bay State Municipal to financially oversee five communities. This does not mean they want to be our boss. This means that they want to come in, and they want to hold our hand through each process for each department, and offer us the support that we need to learn the municipal structure, the municipal procedures, things like that. This would be no cost to the towns. It would also help the five communities that are involved to perhaps collaborate a little bit more, so that I would have four other accountants eventually that I could call, you know, and say, "Hey, so-and-so, I got this going on, what do I do with this?" You know, or "What's your opinion?", things like that. So it is a finite grant. It would run from January 1, 18, to December 31, 18. And it would walk us through every single procedure, from setting tax rates, to preparing tax documents, to helping to have the departments come and communicate better with the computer system, help us do budgeting, help us to come up with a real structure to our financial team, so that the procedures, which we've already started on, are hammered down and set in stone, so that every department does everything the way that they should be, and nobody says, "I didn't know." Because guess what? Now we've got somebody to let us know, you do know. They'll come up with a kind of an annual to-do list for us to keep us organized. They are going to lean towards monthly departmental reconciliations. Previously, it had been done maybe yearly, if it was lucky. I got it down to every couple of months with Sandy, and then of course, that fell off. So I have been balancing ever since then, and that's really not the way that it should be. So we need some direction and support for all of the new people in these towns. And then also, they would help us with DOR, with any remediation that has to happen throughout the year. Keep in contact with DOR, saying, "Hey, this community, we're working on this this week, give us next week." You know what I mean? Or whatever the situation is, or can we get it in early? That type of thing. So again, it would be, I don't want to throw out the word "regionalized," because that tends to send out a negative message with employees.
Basically, splitting the bill and having a consultant.
Yes, that's what it is.
Yeah, yeah. It's the outside side coming, and takes just the right way to do things.
Yeah.
Yes. Yep. Go ahead.
So, so we're clear. Bay State is going to write a grant, and with that, with the approval of that grant, receive monies, and they will be managing the grant.
I'm not sure exactly, I guess there's supposed to be some discussion on that sometime before 10:13.
Yeah, because it's a timeline for all the grant developments on the second page, so all the different things that we have to do.
Yeah. The folks within the town have work already that's on their plate. Managing grants...
Is a lot of work.
Oh, no, no, I don't think, no, I was, I was under the impression that Bay State was going to manage the grant.
I, to be honest with you, that's not specified in here.
And so I would, I'm all for it.
Yeah.
But on the flip side of that, I don't want the town, the employees of the town to be burdened, they are to be assisted. And so therefore, as this thing were to come to fruition, that be clear, that in fact, you're looking for support rather than to manage.
Support. And then also, I read here two of this funds, because I had heard some comments of different people, had said that we would have to continue on with it, with this financial management. We don't. Says the funds for the project expire December 31st, 2018. And it said, "Should the town wish to continue with the services past the end of the period, we will make available and affordable services that build on the foundation laid for the Community Compact." So we don't have to take on this person afterwards. This person is just here for the year to help us out.
Yeah, and the other town, so...
And the other town.
I think it's a great resource, if we can get to get the grant.
Yeah, if the grant comes through, I think it would be ideal for the town. I know a lot of people are feeling like, well, big brother is going to be looking over your shoulder. I'm talking employees.
Well, honestly, we need big brother looking over our shoulders. So I don't have a problem with that.
No, I think it's, I think...
I do too. There's too many new, I admit, I'm still only here in this. There's a lot I still need to learn. And I make calls every day. How do I do this? What do I need to do?
And the problem is, depending on who you call, because so much is subject to interpretation, you could call two people and get three answers, and trying to figure out which of the three answers is the right answer.
Exactly.
And speaking of that, we're going to jump back into the procedure book and get going. We've done very well. We're halfway through the procedure book to make sure it's consistent with all Mass General Law and town practices. But again, I look to you, Carrie, to help us understand the timing of when we get that going again. But that's something that we just need to keep fighting through.
Yes, absolutely.
And, you know, no matter how many years you've been doing a position, there's always, if you have some training, there's always something that you're learning.
Absolutely.
I can't tell you how many times I've been sent a training for the same stuff, and you always walk away with something.
So do we want to have a motion to do the...
You guys need to...
I'll make the motion that we support the grant, grant application, and I'll leave it at that.
And I'll second that.
And then the only thing that, as you look to who's managing this thing, just to make sure that the burden's not on you, Carrie.
So all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we just need to send a formal communication to Bay State that we would like to be one of the sign-on communities for this?
Yeah, it's on here, yes. The Board of Selectmen, we have to send a letter, and I will have to sign that letter saying we're looking forward to that.
I actually have a conference call with Justin at 10:00 today, so I will ask him specifically what we need to do for the next step.
Great.
Okay, thank you, Carrie, for coming forward. Okay, next on our agenda is some furnace quotes for the new furnace. And this came from some great sentiment, and he's not able to be here with us this morning. And he got a quote here from McDonald Heating and Air Conditioning and Plumbing Shops. And the quote is $13,498.
And that's Bill's recommendation.
Bill's recommendation.
Can I make a motion that we support Bill's recommendation?
I'll second that. I'll second it for discussion, whether any other quotes, if that's one that recommended, that's why he gave us that one.
No, that, that was the only quote.
Well, that's the one that he recommended. And that was from their committee, so it's just him saying it.
Freaked it through the first tent.
So do we have any discussion on it?
Sign who you're going.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now I have to sign the annual EMS regional agreement. I would like to, a motion to sign the annual...
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now that's the one with North Brookfield, I presume.
This is what, we signed this every year. It's, yes, it's with, it's for the Medical Services for East Brookfield, North, North Brookfield.
Oh, that's the regional agreement. Yeah. Okay, that's the standard one.
Provide paramedic-level advancement support through a regional agreement. We sign this normally, so the chair has committed to sign this.
One thing to make note of, and I'm glad that the chair of the advisory is here, is that I was going through the old department reports in minutes, and currently, year-to-date, we have hit as many EMS calls as we normally have in a full year. So with any luck, the budget will hold, okay? Because that's, I believe, a calendar year, I don't know if that was fiscal year or calendar year, but for the same time period, we're running a little bit high, so there may be some need at town meeting to do some transfers. But that would come from the ambulance fund anyway, so it's not, it's not a huge issue, but just so that we keep an eye on it.
Sure. Overpopulation.
Yeah, we have an aging population, so it's gonna, it's gonna happen. And it's been slowly trending upward. It's not like it's all of a sudden, it's more. And it's not necessarily driven by any unique occurrence. The year prior was kind of the record-breaking year. Now we're hitting another record-breaking year, so...
Okay, thank you.
So we're all settled with that. Now we'll move on to, this came from the Highway Department, that they would like us to adopt the Complete Street Policy. And this, from my understanding, is the reason we really have to do this, is so that when Cindy is applying for grants and things...
This has a, this has a major impact on the point system for getting state grants.
Yes.
And they did a nice job with this, by the way.
Yes, I know they did. I thought it all over. So do we want to do any more study on this, or no?
Oh, no. In fact, coming out of the open space meeting yesterday, or the buildup to the replacement of the open space, this builds on the desire of the town, a number of folks in the town, to have connecting trails, sidewalks, those kinds of things, so that if we were in fact to ever do anything with a particular street, and the thing that came up yesterday was to go from the center up to 148 to double's elbow, this money, this allows you the monies to actually do that. And again, it's not town money, it's actually grant monies that force you, I use the word "force," it's not correct. It allows you to go do these things in a smart sort of way, so...
And the nice thing about complete streets, for anybody who's concerned about it, by adopting the policy, it doesn't obligate you to always be compliant to complete streets. It just requires that during the planning phase, thank you, one more cup of coffee, I think is what I need, that you at least consider, you know, other alternative forms of transportation. So you just, you have to show that you in good faith considered, hey, is it possible to just even have a broader, you know, a broader shoulder to the road, to make it safe for pedestrian and bike traffic? Or do we need to look at some alternate means of getting a trail in from point A to point B? So it's nice in that it doesn't, it doesn't like tie your hands at all, but it does give us the opportunity to apply for appropriate monies to stay compliant with our own town.
The sum of a half million bucks a year.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not chump change.
Yes, it's not pennies.
So I would like to make a motion to adopt the Complete Street List Policy.
You have a motion.
Second.
Any discussion on this at all? All in favor? Next one here. Appointments. Appointments, and do you have the wage authorization thing to make sure?
Yeah, they're, they're actually after, so you want to do the wage authorizations first, and then do the appointments, either, it's the next folder.
Oh, it's the next folder. Well, no, we can do the appointments first. Okay, we have an appointment here from Susan Brogan to be a member of the Bylaw Committee for a term that expires June 30th, 2018. And do you want to do the individual...
Still as a group.
Okay, and then I have another one for a municipal clerk. She is working for the assesses office, and her name is Patricia King. And her appointment also, oh, we don't have an appointment date here, or she just...
Well, isn't she a hire?
Yeah, she's a hire.
That's why I didn't put a date on that.
Yeah, so she's a hire on this one. And this is for the assesses office. And then we have an emergency operator for Bedford Emergencies, and that is Linda McCloud. This is for the highway. Another one also for the Highway Department is Anna Norton. And I would like to have a motion to accept these appointments.
Do you have a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sign those.
I'll need you to sign them. Okay, now we have some wage authorizations that need to be signed. Okay. This is for the, these were already been signed by Personnel Board. So this is for the emergency operators for the highway, and it's Adam, Adam Norton, And then we have one for the assesses, Patricia King. And another one here for Jeffrey White, who we've made a position of lieutenant with the fire department. And Matthew Lantaven, he's another one for firefight position. And Luke Quatricelli from the Fire Department. And also, we have, I think we did this one last week, but we didn't sign it, for Mica Laird, for EMT position, which is a probationary period. So I would like to have a motion to sign this.
Motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
So do you, does anyone know, are those new operators that Herb got?
Yes, they're both new operators.
Great, so the posting helped, or did it at least finally find some folks? That's good. 27.
Yes.
Oh, I didn't put a date on.
That's okay, I just realized that none of us did.
Cover this up.
Trying. Like I said, a little early.
Me too.
Usually have an hour to drive and wake up before I have to speak to another community.
I don't have anything really on the other.
Just a couple of things you mentioned you might want to talk about are stuck in there. I don't know if you even wanted to do it, maybe not.
Okay. This is something I guess you were requesting to find out if I would be adding a treasurer's skills matrix development discussion.
Oh, yeah, but then I had gotten word back from Karen that you felt it was a Personnel Committee question.
See, at first, when she came, Karen had discussed it with me. I thought what it was, it was something that would help us on our, you know, when we're doing up all of our grade and wage scales, you know, we have to do to see how much, you know, a person is, and when we're rating a job. That's what I thought, that's what I thought this was. But then I found out it wasn't that.
Well, so the question, a couple of different residents of the community have come to me about the fact that we had hired somebody once again in the last two or three hires that we've had for the position of treasurer, have been people that may or may not have had a significant municipal experience, okay? And in the instance with Ms. Creashna Lani, she had municipal experience, but not necessarily treasurer experience. We've gone through the trouble of ensuring that we have, in essence, a trainer to help certify her, in essence, not certify formally, but certify informally. But it dawned on me, based on my experience in Human Resources, that we didn't really have a measuring stick for determining, okay, where are we in that professional development? At what point do we have a baseline established that we no longer, in order to ensure the financial safety and security of the town, no longer need our consultant? And to, in essence, ensure that we have a steady progression of tasks that are getting covered, so that we don't wind up in a position where there's a skills gap when we make the call, hey, we're good to go with just our in-house treasurer. So I basically sat down with the Mass Treasurer Collector Handbook one night after nine o'clock, so if there's anything missing, just bear with me, and, you know, it's certainly a work in progress. But I figured it would give us a tool that basically, on a quarterly basis, we could take a look at where we were with that training program, and where we were with the laundry list of things that a treasurer ought know how to do, and go ahead and say, okay, now we've got somebody who's got a nice balanced proficiency, we're in a position where it's appropriate to remove that crutch of having the treasurer consultant, without necessarily putting ourselves at risk as a town. So that's the intent of that.
But my feeling on this is, if you're doing this and you're singling out one person for this, everybody should have something done like this, because we have a lot of new people. It just shouldn't be one person that is singled out. And then one of, I noticed one of the evaluations on there was from the financial team, so I really don't know if the financial team should get involved with this.
Well, so that's optional, okay? That's, you know, I put it there because in the environments that I've worked, okay? And this is just based on the background I've come from, that you, depending on the type of job that you do, sometimes you do what's called a 360-degree evaluation, okay? Where you get feedback from your manager, you do a self-assessment, and then either your customers or your peers do an evaluation. And it, I would say, it may seem like a singling out, but we have a very unique situation here, and we have a very unique history in this position, okay? So I would be fine, if you want me to sit down, and I could probably generate one a week for every position in this town, I would take, you know.
I just think that singling out, I don't know how she feels about it, but I feel it's singling out one person. And also, I think if you watch, we do have a three-month probationary period, so before that time, when we bring her in for that, we could talk to her, to her trainer, and see how he feels that she's doing, instead of having all this done. Well, that's how we've always done it in the past.
Well, I think we have a unique opportunity, because we're just talking about a grant that's going to look at the financial team of the town. And the interest is that we're all trained up and we're capable in our job and responsibility. I think we have a unique opportunity where this document is just a draft, as you said, that is a recommendation for a position. What I'd turn to say, as the regional grant were to be approved, what this ought to do was be a part of their conversation as to what and how to approach training within the town. So it's a win-win. Again, it's a document, it's a draft, we share it with the grant team and see where it goes, because it's just good advice.
Yeah, and let's be clear, I was not signaling out a person or an individual. That position is such a critical position.
Oh, I understand that, yeah. I've been around a long time.
I know, yeah. And we've struggled so hard with ensuring that, you know, all of those checky blocks get checked, you know? And I think we owe it to our employees, because, and I have no, if you're open to them, I have no problem sitting down with the core documents, the Collector's Handbook has it for, you know, even though you're an elected official, okay? You know, it has the same type of information available for the collector. There's a bunch of information, at least on the DOR sites, about your role. There's a bunch of information about what the assessors are supposed to know how to do, and they have a certification course that goes along with what they do. If, I didn't want to go down that road, because frankly, it's, believe it or not, a little sheet like that can be an awful lot of work to try and get it right. If y'all want me to continue to go down that road for some of the other positions, I'd be happy to do it. I just want to make sure that we're on board with that it's a good tool, and that it's a direction you want to go. I know I got some feedback from some of the other Personnel Committee people that said there should be at least a fifth row that says not evaluated or not observed. That's great feedback.
Well, I know the one other personnel board, she's not here this morning, she wasn't for this either.
Okay.
Who was it? Holly looking for it?
I think we are, I mean, unique situation. I don't think this is more a Lani checklist, it's more, we're paying somebody good money to train her, so we need to know where.
Where we are.
She's at with him training her, because if he's not doing his job, then it's no, it's no slight against her.
The accountability works so good. It was on the train, and the trainer.
Once you explained it, I actually kind of, I agree with that.
And this is a normal business.
Practice.
Practice. I've had it in jobs I've had, and at least Cindy and I, I don't know if Holly had a different opinion, feel this is a good tool.
We had discussed this.
This is a good tool. And Doug Ford agreed.
It's not a witch hunt at all.
No, it's a tool.
It's just figuring out where she's at.
But I think back to the timing, in our role and whatnot. One, we gotta get the financial policy document up to date. Just kind of right behind that, and hopefully with the grant, we'll have some resources. Because again, back to our resources and our time, I don't know about you, but, you know, as the things that I'm doing, what I would consider extracurricular to the role of selectmen, take a lot of time. And really, as we can take and take the burden off you, or Linda, or myself, and get it to people like this grant that we talked about this morning, it's super important that we do that. Otherwise, we're going to burn ourselves out, and we're not going to be able to do the work of the town.
That we need to do, yeah.
Yeah, so we're just going to be careful.
Yeah, we'll be careful, and what we'll do is we'll wait and see what happens with the grant, and then maybe we'll get a call for this more with the grant when it comes.
Oh, I think so. Absolutely.
Although, even if we don't use it necessarily for Lani, we may want to have Keith at least be accountable for what he hasn't trained on that list.
Yes, I could, I think, I could discuss that with him, and show him the list if he wants to send me, you know, if he's updated anything, if he wants to send me a copy of it.
I haven't updated it yet, but I can, I know I got some verbal feedback, but I'll add in the column for the not observed.
Then I can sit down with him someday, and I can go over a lot of this with him.
Yeah.
That's what I'll do.
I had a thought on that, though. Could you make it more of a training checklist versus an evaluation?
Sure.
That changes the vibe of the document 100%, for me, anyway.
And it's the same information.
Exactly. But it's more of a self-check for Keith to go down and say, yes, I've taught Lani this, and for Lani to say, I don't think so, I don't remember that, you know what I mean?
That'd be good.
So.
The three of us could even meet over.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I think that's, I think that's a great way to use it, because it's not, you know, and I think I probably put it as an evaluation, just from a standpoint, as we had phrased it, as we're going to reevaluate every 90 days whether or not we were going to maintain the consultant, or the treasurer consultant. So I think that's where I was thinking the term evaluation, but you're right, it's really just a training checklist.
Yeah. So if you want to get one together.
Sure.
And get it and send it to me, or you can send it to Karen, and she'll forward it to me, and then I'll go over it with two of them.
Okay.
On the way.
Excellent.
Okay. Okay, moving on from that, we have correspondent, which is from negotiations with Ten Half. It says, "Steer board members, as per Massachusetts Educational Laws and Regulations, 603 CMR 4104. This letter serves as a negotiation that the Ten Half Regional District Negotiation Subcommittee will be entering into negotiations with two collective bargaining units in FY18. The Board of Selectmen of our towns collectively have legal right to have a representative as part of the strategy discussion and final ratification vote. The selectmen's representative does not necessarily attend renovation sessions. Only negotiation representatives will be needed to be selected and will serve as a representative from all towns. Please contact my office as the new representative is selected, and feel free to contact me if we have any questions. Erin, and those that are superintendent of schools." So it would be a selectmen from the five-town district that would be involved with this. So I, you know, I also want to check with the other towns and see if one of them would like to get involved with this.
That would be what I would do.
Yeah, that's what I would do.
That's fine. I mean, if no one wants to throw themselves on the negotiation grenade, we could sign me up for it, but I prefer not.
Speaking. Keep the ammunition dry.
Okay, do we have anything else that anybody would like to bring up?
Oh, just very quickly, as far as the Mass Historical and UMass contracts and the like, just so we're all clear, there's actually a meeting today between UMass and Mass Historical as to the historical registration document, which is kind of hopefully the last document that has to be approved between those two entities, so that we would then pay the last, I think it's $4,000, of the monies owed UMass, and with that, Mass Historical would then reimburse the town. So it was supposed to have been done by the 15th, but the Mass Historical guy was on vacation, and so with that, it didn't happen. Down that path, I had the opportunity to meet with the contract administrator for Mass Historical last Friday, when Carol Plon and Lois O'Leary and I went to the preservation workshop. We picked up a bunch of good information as far as plumbing sources for historical preservation and the like, so that was a good session to have attended. And then again, I would want to thank all those that attended the open space framing committee work yesterday for the open space plan. What we now can do is, we now will have some framing sessions over the year, over the winter, which would put us in a position to, again, ask for the grant to rewrite the open space plan. So, progress in those cases.
Great.
Thank you.
Great. And next is, we are going to go into executive sessions, and then we, after we exit that, then we will come back into our normal meeting and what we sign. And this is under executive section, agreed, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining litigation, as open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and chair. So please, I'd like to have a motion.
Yeah, that motion.
I'll second.
Lincoln, aye?
Snider, aye.
Coughlin, aye.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to resume the meeting at 8:45.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we have Steve Gillis.
Correct.
And we have Steve Gillis from the Advisory Board, and he would like to give us an update on how the Advisory Board is progressing.
Well, thanks, thanks for taking me here. I have a statement to read. We have drafted a statement as to our function and purpose. It is, it's in a first draft, everyone's approved it, but we haven't officially approved it, so I'm going to, I'd like to read it, and then just review some of our next steps. And I will get you a copy of this once it's done. So the primary, you know, the function and purpose of the Brookfield Advisory Committee. Primary function of the Advisory Committee is reviewing departmental budgets and submitting a balanced budget to town meetings. All municipal officers authorized to spend money provide an advisory committee with estimates of how much funding will be needed for proper maintenance of the departments under their jurisdiction. These estimates are used in the preparation of town's annual operating capital budgets. The Advisory Committee will meet monthly and more frequently for three to six months before town meetings. Most of that time will be devoted to budget development and review. Throughout the budget cycle, the committee's main goals will be, one, to optimize the value of each dollar spent, to address the town's long range as well as immediate needs, to present a balanced budget to town meeting, and to present budget recommendations in a clear readable format with sufficient detail and explanation so that town meeting members will, can understand the basic goals, policies, trade-offs, and constraints that shape it. This is right off of a come-off Massachusetts document, okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I know you admiring my writing skills, but not mine.
Pleasure, pleasure.
The rest is from the committee, and it's from sort of a roundtable discussion that we had. To this end, the members of the Advisory Committee will conduct our business with all officers and townspeople with respect and an attitude of cooperation, strive to become knowledgeable of each town department by attending department meetings or scheduling time to meet in person with the purpose to understand the goals and needs of the department, understand financial challenges in accomplishing the above goals, and learn of spending cycles or trends that impact their budgets. And finally, to establish a cooperative and respectful working relationship where all parties understand that each of us has a job to do, and which we will do to the best of our abilities for the greater good, intelligent growth, and overall improvement of the town of Brookfield.
That's awesome.
Very good.
You know, we're addressing past problems and moving forward with that. We have a job to do, we intend to do it, and that's, this is how we will do it.
And with all of you being new board members, most of you, I look forward to seeing, you know, the hard work and how you're going to handle a budget situation this year.
Well, it was, I'm very happy I was here this morning, because it's paramount on everyone's mind, on the town's needs. Moving forward, there's a couple of things, forecasting process, we have a couple of sharpshooters when it comes to budgeting and all. We're ready to get into that. To that end, we're, you know, we know we need more education, learning, and direction from the Board of Selectmen. One of the things we're requesting is a direct contact with the Board of Selectmen for these purposes. If that's you, that's fine, but, you know, I certainly heard information come from Beth, like what we heard earlier with what she's pulling together with this treasury checklist and all. What we're looking for is, where do we find this information? What's it all mean, prop two and a half, stuff like that, okay? So if you're the person I got to call every single time, I'm going to be, I'm going to be asking questions like that. If, you know, I know Beth has this information, this is not decision-making, this is just data.
How to.
Where, how to.
So she would like to be, you know.
I'm requesting that.
Well, you're requesting that. And then, I mean, I also would like to know, too, what the different things that are going to be kept informed on, anything new going on.
I think you'll know that.
Being the chair of the board.
Yeah, yeah, you will, you know, that's all part of cooperative and respectful working relationship. We work hard picking these words. So that's, moving forward, so that's a request from us.
And I think, in essence, the probably the best mode is that for guidance and policy questions, it really needs to go to the chair. If you just need technical support of where to find the numbers on which website, that is probably is probably the place where I'm the geeky resource.
And then I have a third role. I shouldn't be doing it, but I'm doing it, is the financial policy rewrite.
Yeah.
Is that, we took a document, and it was a good document, no question about that, but it did not fit necessarily the town of Brookfield's needs. So we've met, and we're now halfway through that document, where we've made it Brookfield's document, such that these are the practices, one, under Massachusetts law, and two, that represent what's going on with the town. And so as that document gets updated and whatnot, more than happy to have you share a copy of that with you, so that you understand the operating policies of the town.
Absolutely. And we've got committee people who want to get their hands on this.
And if we have somebody who wants to take over that role of the editing, I'd be more than happy to pass it on.
You've got a couple of people that are strongly qualified to do that on the committee right now.
Right, and again, if there's an opportunity that way, Steve, it would be awesome to have someone who is more involved. I mean, I did, in my working career, I spent years doing policy stuff, and so I don't have a problem with doing it, but there might be somebody that's more into the workplace today, that has better knowledge, more current knowledge, and I'd be more than happy to hand that off to that individual if that person were to surface.
Great. So much of this, I don't understand, shall we say, okay? Which is wonderful.
It's okay.
This is what I do, okay?
Good job, Stephen.
Okay?
Good job, Stephen.
What I would like is additional information for that. Our next meeting is either the 12th or the 14th, I forget which, and I'd like to just throw it in front of people and say, this is what it is, here's what this financial policy rewrite's all about, and, you know, how often you meet, or when you meet.
What I'll do is I'll send to Karen the latest revision...
Yep.
And have it forwarded to you.
Excellent.
Yep, and again, it's, what I'll do is I'll annotate as to where we are, what's done and what needs to be done.
Finally, I shouldn't say finally, part of this is we will be reaching out to department heads, and we have assigned department heads, two or three of us to each department head.
I think that is a very good idea, because that was done in the past.
Excellent. Well, it became very clear to me in the past budgeting process in the spring, where somebody would sit down, and it's the first time I ever heard about who they are, what they do. Now, I was new, I understand, but it was clear that that was everyone's experience. I shouldn't say everyone, but it was a majority of experience. And so, and our goal is, once again, to observe, educate, understand, with the whole purpose of not bringing to budgeting process any surprises. No surprise, yes. Let's, you know, like, let's all be above board. Me personally, I was going to approach the financial team, treasurer, tax, assessor, accountant, that sort of thing, and move into that area with that, and then capital improvement, you know, vital. And then finally, the Massachusetts Municipal Association has their annual meeting on October 21st, and we have budgeted four people from our committee to go to that.
Great.
That's, yeah.
So there's four of us, we're all going to go, you know, tailgate, have a great time.
I think so, too. Yeah. Very good.
No, the thing that's interesting about this is the demographics are changing, and we really have to be in front of it.
Yeah.
And really, your role is to allow us to understand that.
Great. We're going to do the best, we've got an interesting committee with some new faces, and then, you know, Ken Cleveland, who seems to have done everything in a row.
At some point.
Wow. And so, and a good amount of energy and all. And we had a birthday party last time, and the birthday boy wasn't even there, so we still had to kick.
There you go. Nice.
But that's our attitude, that's what we're doing. Thanks, and, you know...
Thanks to all of you.
Yeah, well, no, it feels right.
For all of you coming, for you coming in today and explaining to us what you're going to be doing, and I do, I'm happy that new people have stepped up to be on the board.
Okay. Well, we're going to do our best, and there'll be some rocks, but that's okay.
Yeah.
That's it for me, thank you. I appreciate you coming out of the executive and going back.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Be well, yeah, thanks. Sorry, I almost crushed you there.
Okay, so we'll leave from now, we'll go back in, we can leave from this session at 9:55, and we will go back and do the executive session.
Great.
Okay.
So Charis has to...
And Charis has to leave.
And Charis has to...
We have to take a vote again. Yeah, we have to take a vote again, I think.
Okay, Lincoln, aye.
Snider, aye.
Coughlin, aye.